Would you please stand now? For the motion. John, you can leave us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Coats?
Here.
Lanchwater?
Present.
DeSander?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Culpepper?
Here.
Weshor?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
I would like to recognize Rose Lynn. Thank you for coming, Rose. And visitors, thank you for coming. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from your package of April 28th, 2014, on regular basis.
So.
Support.
All of you have a question? Go ahead.
I just wanted to know if we got the maps from the GIS for the master plan that we had received before. You said we would have them at this next meeting.
They, she did send, I guess, an updated draft that's on our website. Um, but actually, I can't see that. I checked for all the maps and things. Um, I know the future land use map got updated. I don't remember. I don't remember what other maps we were looking for. I will.
That was before we could complete the, that was the finishing touches of the master plan?
Yeah, she was, she was meeting or talking to the map from the GIS. They supposedly are all in it.
It's all completed now?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we're now the, I guess, the local municipalities can re-hit and review it and make comments.
Okay, I have a motion and a support to approve the minutes submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I have a motion to recode.
Second.
Support from all. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Special orders and scheduled public hearings are on. Public comments? Anyone wishing to address the planning commission on a non-agenda item? Or even an agenda? There's another opportunity. New business. Number one, Pastor Douglas McIntyre of the Abundance Grace Ministries located at 6785 Dixie. Parking lot extension request. Yeah, what do you have for us?
This was part of that. The church is trying, they're trying to do what the site plan, a couple of different authority to do, but they have a little bit of problem with water coming from the east side. Pastor actually, I don't know what month it was, it was February or March, but he was out in the parking lot with a jet camera, which is the other, the last picture. That's the trench he had, he had to put in to keep the building from flooding. There's, there's some photos in here. Mr. Gillis and Pastor provided of the, is the water.
Well, is there an answer for the water problem?
I guess I haven't personally seen it, but Mr. Turnbull from ET Automotive hasn't completed his site plan. The whole back of the building is nothing but grass, sand. It's my understanding that they haven't connected the tile for the catch basins and things. And it seems to be running back and out off the property causing problems. I know his detention pond over on the east side of the property isn't doing anything. So I'm assuming that there's not a whole lot, I guess, running into it. Because I, I would ask that you entertain the church's question as far as, as not pushing the asphalt, at least.
I don't think it's sensible to don't asphalt the flood.
Yeah, so we gotta, we gotta find a way out. I'm gonna have to talk to and possibly send a letter to Mr. Turnbull having completed the site plan and get everything.
What is included on his site plan? Is there, I mean, is there a detention pond or connection to that detention that will take this water?
Supposed to.
And, and this is a perfect example. You guys hear me harp all the time when we see a site plan about detention. I think partly this is a perfect example of why we need that. And we should probably amend our ordinance too.
Well, Mr. Turnbull's property is probably about ninety percent covered.
Right.
So the water's going somewhere. Um, right now, it appears that the water's moving to the west of his property.
Do we have a copy of Turnbull's original plan? Wasn't a storm sewer or something to address that? I mean, if it wasn't connected, they really shouldn't have occupancy.
Well, they.
If they didn't complete it.
Well.
Right?
I actually took him to court to get him to complete the building portion. He was supposed to have it completed in 2012, I think, for the judge in our court beat.
This is, but the parking lot was all part of that? It's like saying sewer wasn't connected, but, but the building's complete, so we'll let him use it anyhow and then go behind the place. That's part of the whole package, really, isn't it?
It is.
So we're at fault a little bit for giving him occupancy. I mean, in a lawsuit, I could see not only the church suing them for flooding them, but us for not following our directives. Isn't that possible? I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but that's.
We approved the site plan. The site plan has to be met.
It has to meet.
That's the bottom line, and that's gonna be the next step, I guess.
Well, I, I don't know what we've got for teeth out of it.
Well, he.
Advertise to get it done.
Did you read the letter that he was sent back in?
Yeah, I know, what's that doing?
Yeah. I mean, that, that basically would cover installation of required curbing catch basins to prevent water runoff to adjacent property.
Well, I mean, and if you look back, even Bruce had letters in about water runoff and things.
Well, the end result is we didn't stop him from occupying. He's using the building, right?
Yes.
So he didn't complete, it's like putting only half a roof on a wedding. When you don't have sanitary and store, he's got sanitary, but he doesn't have store. So he's flooding out the neighbor. And I think that's, you know, I didn't, I haven't gone out there myself. I assume the soil drainage is truly into the church in charge, because I don't think they ever had that wrong.
Do they have final occupancy? Because this letter says, the 2011 letter says he only gave him temporary, but have you since given final?
They have, yes. To the court mayor, they give, but, um, it's, it's kind of a fine line. I realize, because they, I had to take him to court because he was actually occupying it before the building was completed. You know, so I think Bruce may have even been there when I was in court on the building side of it. But, you know, it's, it's, it's a bad thing that it didn't get completed. Unfortunately, I can't make him have money.
But it's got use.
Pardon?
He's got use.
Yeah, but if we stop his use, how's he gonna have money to finish?
Well, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know, and I don't know if the township, rather than talking to the planning commission on this, you either go in and finish the job, that's what happens. You should have put some kind of performance bond up and put it on his taxes or kick him out. I mean, this is gonna cost the township money, but it's not fair for us to approve a site plan that's outrage, oh, he agreed, he agreed. I know what the word is, outrageous or whatever, curt to somebody else. And yes, construction, you have to put the silk fences up, but the storm sewer's gotta be connected. That's part of, you know, the county plan. The county should be bitching about this too, you know?
Well, I don't think the water's actually making it to the retention pond for it to go into the.
Well, we don't have any storm drains here, yeah.
Now, the issue shouldn't be about, you know, unfortunately, it should not be about ET Automotive having to lose money. I mean, church, this church is gonna lose money because, you know, they'll do something and just be a Band-Aid, and then one more work, and then they're out.
Isn't the primary question, though, how do we get him to finish his site plan so that the water does not drain to the east? What are we gonna, what can we do? As planning commissioners are, if we refer this to the township board, what do we do in order to see that happen?
I, at this point, I guess I'll, I just have to send a letter.
Well, he's gonna probably ignore the letter.
And at that point, can John have to do legal action?
How are we involved as a planning commission rather than the township board?
Well, but truthfully, Pastor McIntyre and Pat Gillis are the ones that brought it up to me, because I believe it's December of this year, they're supposed to have their parking lot completed. Well, you can see the reason why they're not doing it.
Yeah, I understand.
They, they actually have a surety bond on it, like, like the commission requested. But until the other problem gets resolved, there's no sense.
This has gotta be a, a lesson for us, that we're gonna have to ask for more surety bonds to, to get this kind of thing done. So when you start messing around with other people's property surrounding you because of water runoff, it's a problem. And now, now it's become a problem, not just for us, but now it's a problem for, for the neighbors, which is not a good.
Right, but I mean, I want, if we could, if we had the ability, I mean, I'm still learning this process. I mean, I go to church too, and we want our property looking nice so that when people come to our church, they go, wow, that's nice. These guys are, these guys are working on a parking lot. You know, and they want their property to be nice so that they can attract more people, and they go, hey, I love coming to churches. Is there anything we can do to make this happen?
Is your chairman's.
Or is that our department at all? Can we make something happen?
My guess is that it's, well, not only is it an issue of drainage, it could be a financial issue as well, I don't know.
I would, I would think that if Mr. Turnbull had the money, he would be working on it. I mean, that, that would be my.
You, you, well, what if we, what if we suggest something like township kicks in the money, does it, adds it to his tax bill? Can we do that?
I don't, I don't know.
I think we need legal counsel.
Yeah, well, that was my question here, Mr. Chairman.
Why can't we ask the township's lawyer to send a letter that just runs, since Ron's already had it recorded, to comply? Let our, let our legal representative send him a letter saying we need to comply. And it's not our responsibility where he goes and gets some money to finish it, it's gonna have to go, and I don't really care. That's, that's not our responsibility. We need to make it correct for all properties concerned. If you guys get back over in between these properties and dig a, dig a ditch or something to the back or from the front or something like that until they can do something, something needs to be done. It can't be violating the property of its neighbor. I mean, that's what I'm thinking aloud.
Yeah, I, I agree. We, we need to mitigate the problem that's there now, and hopefully he takes care of that long term. And Rose?
I just made some notes on it, so we'll address it in the morning.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe involve our attorney to write the letter would probably be helpful. But we, I, I think what I'm saying is that we need to do something. We cannot just let that go and continue to flood. I mean, the problem's not gonna go away. It may not happen this year, but it might happen next year. And you, you never know when the weather turns bad and how much rain or how much snow melt there's gonna be.
I think, Rose, you get the particulars from Ron, what you need for your, for the lawyer, have a letter for Ron.
Probably what we'll do before we contact the attorney is we'll probably contact Eugene, see if we can set up a meeting. Eugene come in, meet with the supervisor, and Ron and I, and just sit and talk about what was approved upon through the planning commission, what was approved, where we got today, and what we need to do to move forward and give them a timeline. If it doesn't appear like he's going to work with us, then we'll contact the attorney and take it.
That makes a lot of sense, Rose.
On one business, it would be best if we start that way.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yes, and what we need to do at this particular time, and I think this is what they're here for today, is to get more time.
Right.
To, to put the pavement in, and we need to make up.
And the chair will entertain a motion to extend their time. Was there a specific request out of bonus time?
One or two years.
Do you wanna hear it, Pastor?
How many?
Two years.
Two years. Should we?
Okay.
Should we get the pastor's?
I'm sorry, I missed the bonus time, so if he does say two years.
Yeah, two years.
Sorry. Okay, I entertain a motion today?
I make a motion that we give the two years.
We have a motion from Mr. Culpepper, support from all.
Well, if we start it, it is more for a discussion. We'll go longer with the possibility of two years if this situation with the neighbor doesn't resolve. But a construction season, you're talking almost three construction seasons. Hopefully, it will get resolved before next spring, so he doesn't flood, and then next year they could possibly do it.
Maybe we can ask Mr. Gillis why they want two years to spend on it.
All addresses, do you want me to mark them please?
Yeah.
That's a, a good question. The reason I'm going for the two years, I realize you're in a difficult situation here. It's gonna take time to resolve it. There's other issues if that's not resolved. With the total survey and everything else, and the architect designed this parking lot, so if this is not resolved in a timely fashion, that parking lot's gonna cost probably twice the amount of money than it would have originally.
Right.
And I would rather ask for two years right now than to have to come back to you again and ask for another extension. Therefore, if it's done with next year with the funds that we have and everything else, we'll do it. I would just rather go for the two years instead of coming back to you again with something else going wrong. That's my reason for the two years, Mr. Turnbull.
However, coming back to us in a year's time is a darn good reminder if nothing happened, maybe we can.
Put some pressure on the other party. It is true. Where are the ten boardings? Township board, the township manager, and Ron.
That's true.
This could be a legal problem, and if it, if they have to sue, they put it on the taxes and get it done. Granted, the two years sound like a reasonable.
The motion is still on the table for two years. Any more discussion on that?
I say two years.
Two years.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
No.
Seeing no more, roll call, please.
Coats?
Yes.
Lanchwater?
Yes.
DeSander?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
Weshor?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your questions.
No problem, I'm sorry it happened. I understand, okay.
Like the same thing with the, they don't have. If they didn't, the owner didn't follow through, the township prepares on, hell, they put it on taxes. I think that's the best way for the township to look at it. I mean, when you're causing harm, like I said, I'm not a lawyer, but that sounds like a good reason to sue both. The township, which I don't like, and the neighbor, you know? So I, I think we should be smart on both sides for Mr. Turnbull to do something.
But, you know, we, we, as a planning commission, have to remember that these things will happen. And if, if we have to be a little tighter in our site plan, we'll be a little tighter in our site plan.
I can turn around and say how many times was investment? I can turn around and also say, look at Nico, they did the painting, that looks great back there.
Yes, they did.
But it looks good, and it's, the man is truthful in his work.
Yes.
So.
I, yes, I, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. Okay. Site plan review, number two. STR fourteen dash oh three, Ron Scholden?
Same.
Okay. Dixie Land Properties has requested a site plan review to construct two additional commercial storage buildings and an asphalt driveway at sixty-six twenty-five Dixie Highway. Parcel ID number oh nine eleven five twenty-two dash one zero zero six dash zero zero. I'm sorry, you got to shut up. Ron, you have a report?
Yes. The actual zoning is C two. The parcel's actually point five one acres. There's, I'd say. The, there's one, one of the proposed buildings is a smaller building, so I think fifteen feet in width. And it's a total of fourteen hundred square feet. The other building is, it's wider and it's thirty-six hundred square feet, and there's actually openings on both sides. In between them, there's the twenty to twenty-four foot asphalt drive.
How wide did you say?
Twenty foot?
Twenty, yeah, it's. There's an existing, or an existing building there, and it narrows down. The existing building's actually twenty-four foot wide for the, or, well, the driveway at the existing is twenty-four, but the two new proposed buildings, it's only twenty, the, the excess. Now, as it, as it goes to the east, it's a one-way going to the east, and there's a radius on the end. And the fire department had a question on that. I, I think Mr. Walters can figure that one out and make the fire department happy. There's eight existing storage buildings on there, and the proposed new buildings will be steel engineered buildings, just like the, the existing. A lot of the lot is in the hundred year flood plain. There are elevations on the, on the site. And there's, there's a pretty good retaining wall that's gonna be built at the back side of the, first of all, the post. Of all these comments, were there concerns? Do you have anything that's, if you'd like to tell us about this in red? I know you got your final in the bag, but any of them, did you have any air grass? I think most of them. They all seem to be very positive. I'd wanna know if you had any, any concerns? Not really. I think the fire department one was probably kind of a. Tell me again about the fire, the fire department. What does he have to do to lighten it, turn radius? Well, the, the fire department wants a.
Yeah, at least twenty.
Yeah, at least twenty.
So is that outrageous?
Pardon? That would be the whole way. Now, the other thing you gotta think of, or is to pick out a forty-five foot long truck. It's gonna need to be bigger than twenty.
Well, the location of that building at the edge of the property, the question is, how much more are you ready to have?
I don't, I think that you, the designer needs to look at the standards for fire truck gradients and figure that out. I don't think it's up to us to decide that.
Right.
The, the other question I had was a call for that, because there are, there are two different zoning districts, but he's nestled right in there right now. This tree went all the way on the east and the south side. I don't see any reason under the sun to require anything landscape cause. So your second bullet that you, that's fire department recommended, was that turned in? That's on section four in the bag, your second bullet, fire department recommendation.
Have you seen this? Have you seen that recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that turned in, Ron? The fire department asked, I'm not gonna read the, second bullet, section four, staff recommendations, fire department comments. They asked for amendments, minimum amendment. Was that turned in? The fire department turned it to me, and then once, once the planning commission makes their recommendation, then it goes to the designer.
Do we have a full-size set of prints, or is this the only prints that's?
Yeah, that's the full size.
And one of these other staff comments, Ron, you had several places where you had outlined for discussion.
Is this attorney's?
You had discussion for the bumper yard and. That was just one of them. And for the dumpster side wall. Has that all been taken care of or do we need to discuss?
We need to do.
Okay, that, that's, that's what, that's what I wanna know. What do we have to do?
Okay, what we will do is I'll entertain a motion to approve the site plan with amendments that are, that Ron has attached. And I think we need to do those one at a time.
So.
Okay? With, with.
Requested with suggestions.
Now, the amendments will be, I wanna make sure that the radius on the east side of the building will allow a vehicle to turn around that tightly nut sure. I wanna make sure that can happen. Also, guardrail or equivalent should be placed in this area to do the steep drop off. Fire department, fire lane, east end of the building is not wide enough for fire rats to turn and exit, so that needs to be addressed. Loading requirements, the loading meets and exceeds, I guess, that's not a problem.
Landscape area requirement, parking area.
Yeah, I think, I think you already addressed. Yeah, I think, I think you already addressed that.
You addressed that and, and, um...
Don't have to do anything there.
And the buzzer, that's already been addressed.
Yeah, yes.
We don't have to do anything.
External, external lighting, though.
Yeah.
A residential district, east and south, are probably, are unlikely to have any residential development in the future. There must be some type of lighting installed, illuminated in the area, wall packs or light boards.
These are all on the back.
Okay.
Right, please.
Right.
Yep. You're just reiterating that, Ron, that's what you're saying, with the amendments. Okay, we have, we have a motion and a support discussion. Any, you had something?
Um, have you applied for DEQ permitting for this, next to the river, you're in the floodplain, do you have that?
The only thing we, uh, we had done so far was the site, uh, the elevation stuff is done.
Okay.
I wasn't told that we need to apply for DEQ.
We're, well, it's a state requirement, it's not a township requirement, and, but we should make sure that that's part of it. I mean, you can't, you can't build in the floodplain and that close to the river without your DEQ permit.
Okay.
So that's a state requirement.
We have not applied for that.
Okay. It'll probably cost you somewhere in the range of a hundred to five hundred dollars. You'll have to submit a full set of plans.
All right.
And, uh, do you have a grading plan or have you looked at detention and storm drainage?
Uh, yes.
And so, can you, I guess, explain that a little bit, how that's gonna work? I, I kinda see the elevation of the different buildings, but how is the rest of the site gonna work around that?
Right now, it all drains, what you see on the, on the east side and the south, south side are all the river floodplain.
Right.
So everything drains back there?
Everything drains into there right now, and we're not changing the floodplain at all.
What is, what is protecting your storm drainage from directly flowing into the river? Typically, you have some sort of detention that cleans the water out before it goes directly to the, to the river?
That in general is for controlling floodplain problems. You, you put the flood, the retention pond in there so that you don't flood the outflow from there and overcrowd.
That too, but you also use it...
Further down, further down the drainage.
You also use it to clean out your water, so if you have, you know, I see you're storing, um, uh, trailers and some vehicles and that type of thing here, so how, you know, if, let's say, I assume that most of those trailers have all of their tanks cleaned out before they sit there, but, you know, what if perchance some sewage?
I'd like to just...
How does that, how do you protect our Cass River from receiving non-point source pollution?
All that area behind us is ponds, that's, that's not directly into the river. It flows after that, it rivers maybe even a quarter mile. Uh, so it flows that, all area behind us is like retention pond.
I just want you to, you heard our discussion, and I know you have a lot more property than the last guy, but, uh, when we talk about stormwater and detention and, you know, we've put some new things in our new zoning ordinance that, that talk about those kind of things and what we require in terms of that. And we have the Cass River Greenways Committee who work to, you know, keep the Cass River waterway clean and this is one way to do it, so.
Yeah.
Um, I, I don't see a grading plan and so I'm asking and, um...
I know it's kind of unusual, but like behind us, it's almost like a big retention pond that's all the way behind us, it's all the way up.
So this, this here is not the river, that's a pond?
No, no.
And is this part of the river?
No, that's not.
Is it just like an outflow?
Well, from across Dixie Highway, that goes, there's more area between our property and the cemetery, and it's just like a big retention pond.
Okay.
And it goes through the river.
So are you talking about this color map here on this side of your land here, is that you're talking about?
That's a pond.
That and the, and... This ditch here?
That, yeah, also.
This ditch, this pond has actually goes over?
It, it actually goes through it, right.
But I think the question is, before this water goes into here, what are we doing to fill it before it gets into here? So you're talking about a retention pond somewhere that's going to, with a overflow in to kind of fillers it in before it gets into here, right?
I was talking about detention pond, retention pond will retain the water, which is what you have here in the picture. Detention retains it temporarily until it can flow out somewhere else, and detention ponds are sometimes dry, but...
Like between the cemetery and our area, that sometimes it's dry and sometimes it's standard water.
Yeah, yeah, the water either filters or there's usually a catch basin that's up a little higher that, you know...
There's vegetation that drains from there that they normally plant, so it fills with that vegetation, sometimes natural cattails and that kind of stuff.
Right, right. And I've seen, probably between the cemetery and our property, a few water at times, and sometimes it's, it's dry, it's dry.
Right.
The laws changed a lot, a lot in the past ten years on floodplains.
Right.
Stormwater runoff. And we might get it okay and they could stop it dead in your tracks because of sheet water flowing off and you don't have enough filtration like Tommy was getting there. And, you know, you might be grandfathered in with what you have. Our hands are tied when it comes to the DNR, and that's very important.
So what they tell us is what we do?
Well, I just, you know, you're also gonna, through the county, you're gonna have to get your soil erosion permit for this, you're gonna have to have soil erosion measures up, and, uh, if you don't do that, well, the so, the county guy's gonna come out here and immediately, if it's not there, he's gonna contact the state, so you're gonna, you would get heavily fine.
Kinda give you a warning order.
Yeah.
Because this Cass, whole Cass River Basin for the last couple of years, our conscience is saying it's been changed. And they've been watching it all the way from Cass City all the way down and everything, those pollution runoff into the river and stuff like that, so you're gonna be questioned about that.
I have the same thing, Frank.
Yes.
Yes.
Same words, I love your same river.
But with the floodplain, that's a kiss of death anymore, it's, it's really touching.
And you've, you've also got structures on that. Uh, with the structures, you've also got the structures in the floodplain, so, you know, the DEQ may require you to put some venting or something in there, but I guess if... According to what you show on here, uh, it looks like those structures are going on the end of this one and right here, am I correct? And anything that's in red here is floodplain?
We had, we had the survey done by Spicer Engineering, and they did surveys of all that site, and they said none of them were in the floodplain, they have elevations that are all above six oh one.
Did you do your mapping with FEMA to change the floodplain elevation?
Yes, I would, since I said we had that, I believe I forward to talk, you ended it.
Okay. Um, last question I have is, I think you're moving your dumpster pad, but I don't see where the new one is, where is that going?
Uh, well, it'll be located, it'd be where it is right now, it's, uh, it's south, it'll be next to the building.
So, are we talking like here? Cause right now, what, you have it right in here?
Uh, right now, right now it's, uh, right here.
Oh, is this gonna be concrete then?
Yes.
Yes. That's all I have.
Any other questions? We have a motion, we have a support, discussion is closed. On the roll call, please.
Coats?
Yes.
Longshawer?
Yes.
DeSander?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Culpepper?
Yes.
LaShore?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
The votes were, after the vote, these people are the same people that own it for years, and they run a pretty clean up for them.
Yes, Dave.
I'm glad you did that.
I think it developed beautifully because we started to buy that house.
Oh, yeah.
Well, glad.
Say we followed all your recommendations, Ron. I say we followed all your recommendations, your work wasn't for none. Um, there are no committee reports, whole business, master plan update. You kinda did some of that already.
Yeah, well, this is, like I was calling up, I asked earlier, um, the, the updated master plan is on the, the website, and, um, basically she sent out a, an email request for any other communities in the area to respond with comments if they had any, and after the forty-five minute period, um, we can...
That'll go to the township board?
Yeah, well, I would say, depends on how quick it goes, if there's anything that looks at the end, we, we take it to the planning commission again, just to, just to get you guys' approval, just to, before it goes to the board.
Very good. Uh, comments, anybody have any comments from minutes of other?
Always appreciate them.
Minutes or, or commissioners? I do appreciate them also. Anybody have any comments about those, other minutes? Okay, planning commissioners. Mr. Brown?
I'd like to say that the new sidewalk and approach out there looks very nice, and the clumping up the flowers along Dixie Highway instead of spread out from end to end, looks a lot better too.
I agree. Mr. Coats?
Good.
Mr. LaShore?
Like the looks of that, uh, Dollar General, uh, sign going up and...
Just out of curiosity with the flowers and the DDA, the district goes a long way and we're just picking out the downtown village, not that I think it's wrong, cause it looks really beautiful, the village, but the DDA goes all the way from Punta Vista, all the way down to Dixie, the junction, and all the way to junction, township line, and it looks a little shady when some people on the DDA just happen to have businesses where the flowers are.
I think this was done as a phase one.
Okay.
To try it for a first year, and second year they were gonna look at expanding it out for a total of...
Baby steps. And I didn't even know if it'd do better out there, I liked it.
They just had a certain amount of money for it this year and...
But for what it's worth, you know, the DDA, and of course, other things bother me about the DDA when the auditor went through and said they were enough shady, is that right? They're overspend a little bit?
No.
Okay, that's why I kinda read it from the minutes that they, uh, for what they committed, they were a little tight, but if they aren't, good.
Mr. Coleman? Mr. DeSanders? I put in front of you an invitation, I, I direct your attention to that invitation. I, I do invite you all, the board members and township members, to please, uh, put this on your calendar, I think you have a great event, it's not gonna be a long event, I was gonna ask about an hour or so, one hour probably, with refreshments and meet and greet at the end. Those that may not know, Major General McQueen, he's been a longtime community member, he lived down in Diamonddale, like most reservists and guard members, kind of live in incognito, going, doing their business, and people don't even know he's probably always in the service. But just a little overview on him, uh, Major General McQueen, I served with him for many, many years on many, many different assignments. He went on way beyond myself, and he was selected, uh, for his first MP Brigade, he had MP background, and he came from a enlisted man, he was a Marine, uh, made it all the way to E seven in the Marines and transferred, got a direct commission as an officer, and came in as captain, and then he made it up through the ranks, his various different assignments, US Army Garrison, uh, three hundredth MPs, a whole bunch of different assignments. But notable are, when he got his MP Brigade out of Pennsylvania, he had the mission to go straighten out Ali Gray. So he went over to Iraq and he had that mission to straighten that up. He got off that mission and Getmo was kind of, uh, McConnell Bay, McConnell Bay was kind of getting bad, a bad rep, and so they sent him down there with that mission to straighten that up. Uh, he did so good at those two jobs that he was selected to be the commander for the two hundredth MP Command, in charge of all the MPs in the world, active reserve. And then, uh, from there, he was moved to Fifth Army, Fifth Army Force down Houston, Texas, and he was part, he was in charge of North American Security Operations as Major General Deputy Commander for the Fifth United States Army. So he retired a year ago, last, this coming August here. Uh, we was planning this as a, a fall event last year, and moved it to spring, and spring did quite work out, and then, uh, we agreed on the D to G C on, on invitation, and, uh, it's gonna be at the Old Town Hall, at the historic village, and it'll start promptly at zero six, it's about eighteen hundred or six o'clock. So we invite you all there. Some of you may have got a, a E invitation, and maybe you was afraid to open it because it's a military E invitation, you get the invitation, it'll appear, and you click on it, you get a security message, it says they don't recommend you go to this site, but you just kinda click through it, everybody that's been in the military knows you, just click through that, and the invitation will pop up for your RSVP, and you can RSVP with that, but I didn't send you guys that one, I did send the board one, and so I didn't get any replies back from me or Rose, so...
You will.
Okay. So we're really looking forward to that, I know that, I just got a call today from Carl Lemon, we got a couple of other generals that has already RSVPed that they're coming to the event. Deb Stabenow will probably have a rep here for sure. Dave Kemp, uh, says he's not gonna come. And they won't be speaking much, even though this is an election year, they know, being a military event, that their job is just to meet and greet afterwards, and the event is the event, so they won't be speaking unless you got a presentation, that's the only time to get to speak. A few commissioners for the county, they're coming already, they are RSVPing, so, they call upon, please.
By the way, his wife was my daughter girl, my lady.
She really knows someone, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I know the family very well.
I thought it was kinda funny, Rose on the RSVP the other day, like she's easy to RSVP.
Yeah.
This is Moore.
Um, two things, now that we've got the master plan just about finished, our next step was to update the zoning ordinance, are we gonna start working on that?
Yeah, I actually had every, every intent to have some stuff here for you tonight, it's just been too busy. Some are just a bad...
So next agenda?
Yeah.
And, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna harp a little bit more, but, uh, so part of the reason I think that we get ourselves in trouble is because we accept the plan like that, it's not a complete set of plans, there's no grading, it doesn't show us stormwater detention or, or what the, what the site's gonna look like, we've seen a complete set of plans. Is that, did we get a sealed set? It doesn't have seal on it, our ordinance requires a seal, and so, I'm just putting that out there, but if, if we wanna get, we wanna do it right, then we need to do it right.
But we don't have to have come back, like...
I, I appreciate that they're a, a good business and that they wanna expand, and I, I don't wanna stop them from doing that, but we need to follow our ordinance.
They do, they do.
And originally, that was just, uh, that was a preliminary plan that it brought in.
If you go through the site plan review, it doesn't have everything on it.
Oh, I know.
So...
Not many of them do.
I know. I'm sorry, that's all I guess, shouldn't, shouldn't have the requirement, it is a requirement, we're not following it.
Walt, do you have anything from the township board for us?
I don't.
Um, do you have anything further?
Um, not really, um, I did, I guess, on the zoning ordinance, what do you think is the best way to start? I guess...
Are you gonna do it, are you having a consultant come in, or what are you doing? Are, do you have time to do that?
Not, not really, but.
They need to find somebody.
I mean, that, that, that is a heavy duty job.
Oh, I know.
It's a lot of work.
Yep.
Well, it's, it's just like the site plan. These people, you know, I don't think they have any bad intent. They just, they give you as little as possible. Just enough to get by, so they, they're not spending a fortune, um, you know, which, good, bad, and otherwise, it's, it's all it is. I don't know that some of our local designers even have electronic designs that they can even use. A lot of them are just hand up. So, if they gotta revise them, it's, it starts to have a lot of money, and for some reason, people part of the problem, Eugene, their E team, I don't know if this is a local design. And I don't know how many times you guys, that Bruce had to go through that, to get the paperwork and things. And I, I don't wanna have excuses, but I've got enough stuff going that not sending the stuff back, it's almost impossible. I did the, I go through our site plan stuff, I'll send it to them, but then they, they send me back the same stuff. You know, I don't know, on the building side, I just, I can any kind of, on the zoning side, I don't know, it's a different world, it's, it's, they don't, they don't really step it up and give you what you want, where when it comes to the, the construction side, they know they won't get a building from Heather Plumbing or any other government. If they don't do a, a zoning, it's just, I don't, planning commission will do it. Cause I'd love to, I'd love to have a perfect set of plans.
Well, is it that you don't bring it to us until it's complete?
I shouldn't, I mean, technically, I shouldn't.
Right.
But.
I know that they're in a hurry, and they wanna move forward, and they wanna get something built, but if they're not submitting it correctly, it shouldn't come to us.
There's.
I know there's the pressure.
Yeah, there's other, other factors that, that play into that.
I understand. I just come from the side where we prepare the plans.
Oh, I know.
And this is not complete.
No.
Okay, um, our next scheduled meeting is not until October twenty-seventh, unless something comes up. So, what are, next scheduled one is October twenty-seventh?
In Speedway, um, Dixie and seventy-five. Um, I believe they purchased the old pilot, the shuttered building. The original Speedway. So they, they do have some plans, but I just got an email saying that they're on hold for a while. They wanna demo both of the buildings, and review the whole lot for kind of the truck stop type of Speedway. I guess that remains to be seen.
Governor has to look for the commercial center where the doctor's offices are, not over Dixie. Are they going to go ahead with things too, or?
I'm running contact with the, the engineer
for the site plan, but I haven't heard anything back in a couple weeks now.
Who might have heard? Their thought was that they were approved for everything, um, last time, I was like, well, you were.
For the building itself, yeah.
I'm gonna say that for you. Before I next move, I'm having another second thing.
They did a good job, the only question I had on there was obligations.
Well, that's a sticky point for a lot of these guys too.
Say, there's no more business for us, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
The vote.
I have a motion, support. All those in favor, say, everybody say an aye.
Aye.
Coats, motion adjourned.